Order please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to welcome all the guests in the audience today. This is a committee of the whole meeting and is comprised of all members of council. Today's agenda lists all the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda are provided on the landing and are also posted on our website. Today's meeting is being livestreamed and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from today's meeting will be published on the county's website immediately and can be viewed by selecting the streaming tab on the county's homepage at thecounty.ca. At this meeting, any person in the audience may speak to any item on the agenda for three minutes. Under Agenda 5, I'll be asking for comments from the audience. Please raise your hand at that time and indicate which agenda item you wish to address. The maximum time allotted under this section is 30 minutes. Your name will be included in the Committee of the Whole report and form part of the public record and posted to the county website. We'll request that you provide a written copy of your remarks to the clerk for the record. And when you speak, please stand at the podium, turn on the microphone, and provide your full name and address your comments to the Chair. Following your deputation, there may be questions from members of the committee, so please remain at the podium to respond. Any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of September 10th, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. You may attend the council meeting to see the final disposition of any item from today's agenda, and you may speak again at council, but you will be limited to three minutes unless you register first and are listed on the council agenda. The clerk's office can provide information and advice on this process. There's a brochure on the landing posted on our website for information for deputations. And finally, as a matter of housekeeping, to exit the building in event of a fire, please use the stairs outside the door of this chamber or the stairs off the committee room to the left, and please don't use the elevator. And finally, finally, please turn off or mute all cell phones. All right, so let's get going here. And Item Number 2, Confirmation of Agenda. Could I have a mover and second for this, please? Councillor Margitson and Councillor Prinsen.
Margitson, Prinsen, motion that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting of August 29th, 2019 be confirmed.
All those in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. Disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. Does anyone have something they wish to tell us? All right, seeing nothing, we move quickly to deputations, and we'll start with 4.1, and we have a deputation by Megan Smith concerning East Mary Street. Welcome, Megan. So, microphone is on, is it?
Thank you.
So you could, if you could state your full name, you have 10 minutes, and I'll give you a little sort of one or two-minute warning, just so you know where you're at, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
My name is Megan Smith, and I live at 9 East Mary Street here in Pickton. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I'm here at, I'm presenting this deputation today on behalf of the residents of East Mary Street here in Pickton. It's been called Lower Mary, One Way Mary, even Wrong Way Mary. We residents met this spring and voted to call ourselves the Proud Mary Neighborhood Association. We also agreed unanimously that the flooding of Marsh Creek onto public and private land is our first and most urgent priority. We thank you, the committee members, for your thoughtful, for your commitment to our community and for your thoughtful consideration of this deputation. It's important to know for context that flooding into our yards is not typical. Residents who have lived along the creek for years have never experienced flooding at any time until 2017. At worst, the grass at the bottom of our yards is spongy in the early spring. Most of the pictures you'll see today are taken from my yard, but all the people who have homes adjacent to the creek and the stormwater ditch have had the same experience as I have. In theory, the system is sound. Spring stormwater is channeled effectively to the creek beginning in April. The stormwater runs west to east through the ditch that drains into Marsh Creek via a culvert behind my neighbor Maggie's house. By mid to late May, the water is almost gone. As you can see in this picture, our yards are dry by time for mowing season. In a typical year, any dampness has been forgotten by the time the irises are ready to bloom. June is beautiful along the creek. We have different styles, but everyone maintains their own property, and we all chip in to keep the public land clear and tidy. The municipality mows the top of the levee. We clean the ditch of leaves and debris in the spring and the fall, and we mow the side of the levee once or twice a week from May to October. I don't know what's going on. For many of us, the creek and green space played a big role in our decisions to buy our homes on East Mary Street. We spend a lot of time outside and visit with the residents and visitors who walk on the levee trail. This was what a typical spring used to look like. Until 2017, when the creek reversed its flow, because of high water on the Great Lakes in 2017 and the International Joint Commission Plan 2014, sorry, 14 protocols, the water in Pickton Harbor started coming up the creek in early spring. It happened again this year. It flows directly and relentlessly into our backyards. Starting in May, water from the harbor flows up the creek, but before it gets to the catchment ponds or wetlands in Delhi Park and Glenwood Cemetery, it is directed into an open check valve through a culvert and into our yards. It's like a tide that ebbs and peaks in as little as 10 minutes in response to the winds and waves on Lake Ontario. With each cycle, the inflow is greater than the outflow, so the water in our yard gets higher by the hour. Flooding onto the public and private land along the creek is the result, but the underlying issue is the lack of maintenance and repair of existing infrastructure. There are four components to this problem that need immediate attention. Check valves that never close, there's a mystery pipe there that nobody knows where it comes from or what it's supposed to be doing, an unnecessarily and poorly built culvert. And to clarify that, a few years ago, water started pooling in the yard behind the mini plaza on Bridge Street. It was deemed to be groundwater, and a culvert was installed to drain the water into the creek. It turned out that the water had actually come from a water main break, and the culvert was unnecessary. The fourth component is the degradation of the levee. During installation of that culvert, the levee was damaged and never repaired. This is how it looks. The flow reverses in the creek due to high water in the Great Lakes. The faulty check valve actually directs water into public and private land. It flows through a culvert via the open valve and the mystery pipe into our yards. Later in the summer, when the water gets high enough in the creek, it floods properties, it floods properties at the east end of our block through the extraneous culvert. Finally, water starts to spill over the damaged levee. The effects are significant and numerous. Property damage. Sheds and equipment rot, burn barrels rust, fire pits and patios heave, gardens are ruined, lawns are killed, and the area must be raked and soil amended before it can be reseeded or resodded. It's a health hazard. Mosquito and black fly populations explode. We can't sit in our yards, garden, mow the bit of lawn we have left, or even let the dogs out with spraying ourselves with insect repellent every single time. Residents suffer from mold-related illnesses, respiratory issues, and allergies. Some of us have been dealing with breathing issues, headaches, or chronic pain and flu symptoms for weeks. There's a decrease in our quality of life. It's disgusting, and it stinks. The smell of rotting vegetation, animal waste, and mold is sometimes overpowering. It's a thick, heavy, gassy stench. You can almost see it. The algae covers everything, and then it starts to rot, too. Emotional wellness is compromised. Part of our yards that is not underwater is sodden, so there's no space to let children play, sit in the sun, or even barbecue. Our friends don't really want to come by, but we're too tired of them not to invite them anyway, and it lasts all summer long. This, the entire block and every home along the creek, has been significantly affected. You'll see the same scene in any of the yards on the south side of the street. Property values fall significantly. The combined property values of the nine homes affected was approximately $3 to $4 million, and we can only speculate how far the value of our homes has fallen. The water came to within 10 feet of our homes this year. Basements and crawl spaces were flooded. We cannot wait until buildings are actually damaged before this problem is corrected. The water does not seep up from the ground. It flows in from Lake Ontario. In this video, you can see the wind is clearly from the west while the water is flowing from culvert just to the east, if it works. Sorry? There we go. Okay. Whenever the water rises in the lake, it courses into our yards. This was happening at a reduced rate up until August 27th. There's very little water left, but it's still coming in when the lake rises. It has been suggested by county and Quinte Conservation that this is groundwater. I don't see that. The flooding, abatement, recovery, and restoration takes a full year. The water flows into our backyards first and drains out last because we are the last stop before the harbor. We understand that many people in Prince Edward County have been negatively affected by flooding, and that some have suffered significant property damage and loss to income. We truly empathize and wish them all well, and we empathize. We know what they're going through. Our problem is unique in that it is and was, it was and is preventable. We know we live on a 100-year floodplain, and we understand what that means. We also know that the levee is there to protect our property, and we know that this has been neglected. This has to change. The good news is that the solution requires no new infrastructure. It's all there, and it's a sound system. The existing hardware just needs to be repaired or replaced, and the damaged levee needs to be restored. Step 1, remove this culvert. Work can start now. The area is almost dry and accessible, so work should start immediately. Step 2, restore the levee. There is a significant dip in the height of the levee. Repairing this now will give the ground time to settle so that future, further backfilling can be completed as necessary to restore the levee properly. Step 3, replace or repair valves on both sides of the creek and investigate or remove the mystery pipe. This is where the water accesses our properties in the early spring. This faulty valve also causes the most significant damage, so it must be repaired as soon as possible. In the last, it is the last area to drain in the fall and the first to flood in the spring, so there's a very tight window of time for this work to be done. It is critical that this be repaired before ground freeze to prevent a recurrence next year. Spring 2020 will be too late. This is how our properties would look if proper care had been taken. This is an urgent and necessary repair to existing infrastructure, not an improvement or upgrade. Staff from the municipality and Quinte Conservation have indicated that the master drainage plan for Pickton Harbor will not address this problem. In any case, the plan will not be approved, let alone completed, in time to prevent flooding next year. This work can't wait. It needs to be completed immediately. Finally, step 4, create an annual maintenance plan that includes twice-yearly inspection and repair of the valves, culverts, the levee, the stormwater ditch, creeksides, and bridges, and collaborate with the community and Quinte Conservation to educate town staff and residents on stewardship, make recommendations to optimize the enjoyment of and respect for public lands and waters by both locals and visitors, and to encourage ownership. We ask that the repair and restoration of the levee, valves, culverts, and ditch along the north side of Marsh Creek between Bridge Street and York Street be completed before ground freeze to protect public and private land from future flooding. We also ask that you direct staff to report back to council on the status of the work by October 4th, 2019. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan of council? I've got Councillor Nyman, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you just go back to your one picture there, the last picture of the backyard?
Tell me when to stop.
Yeah, right there, I'll do. So, I guess if you needed to get in the backyard with your vehicles, really, the only way is to come through the back, right? There's no, you can't access your backyards from the street?
No, it's all street parking. People use their driveways in the front, yeah. The only vehicles that really go there are the county's riding lawn mowers, yeah.
Yep. But if you needed to, if you had to have work done or something, or you needed to get back there with a vehicle, that's the only access is through the back there?
Yes, yeah. You could start at the mini plaza and go right down to York Street. I think it's wide enough, I think, for vehicles that work.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the deputant? Follow-up, Brad?
Well, if nobody else has any questions, I'd like to just make an amendment to the motion, if I get a second, or that you referred to staff to have a look at it or to investigate if there's a way that we can mitigate the problems. Because I think the flooding is a new norm, so this is going to be an ongoing problem, so, and some of the concerns that were raised, I think, need to be looked at.
Okay. Madam Clerk, just a matter of process, do we put the, do we receive it first and then discuss what Councillor Nyman is speaking about?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Please receive the deputation, and then, should you wish...
And we'll discuss. Very good, thank you. All right, so could I have somebody put this on the floor, mover and a second, or to get this? Yes, I've got Councillor Bailey moving, and Councillor McNutt in second, if you want to read that for us.
This is Bailey McNutt, in motion that the deputation by Megan Smith regarding concerns with East Mary Street, Pickton, be received.
All right, thank you all in favor. That carries. Okay, so comments from councillors on this? Questions? S.C., Councillor St. Jean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Megan, for bringing this matter to the attention of everybody else around here in this room. As you know, I walked the property with you back in the spring. I can't remember the exact date. And periodically, over the last many weeks, I've been stopping in to monitor it and see where it's going, hoping that it would get better, but obviously, it's not. As soon as the lake level gets down, obviously, it's going to get better. It is a high-water problem completely out of our control. I guess that's the best way to put it. And Councillor Nyman is suggesting that we get a staff report on the best way to remediate this. I believe that is the next natural step here. But just to further inform everybody else what I saw there, I have to agree with Megan and the residents that the levee is degraded. It drops down, and that's what's causing the majority, the flooding on the municipal property that's abutting all of their properties. To me, that's a simple fix. Put the levee back. Backfill it like it should be. That will mitigate a big chunk of this without having to go into a ton of extra work and going really, really deep. This is a simple fix, it really is, to get it started. So I'm hoping that that motion goes on the floor.
Are you seconding his motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
And I would really encourage staff to work with the neighbors to at least get that done this year. Again, we have no idea what we're going to see next year. My suspicion is the lake level is going to be where it is right now, and then we're going to get soaked again.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, anyways, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, so you're going to second that as Councillor Bullock, I had you as the next speaker question or comment from you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this a point where we can ask questions of staff?
Yeah.
Okay, good. For staff, A...
Councillor, Madam Clerk, we're not going to ask, we're just really going to ask for a report at this point, so we're going to hold off on that and just get it, get it to staff to...
It'd be nice to sort of get the facts of...
Let them look into it, and then we'll brief from there. So why don't we move directly to councillor, unless there's some other comments that we need to hear? Or have we heard what we need to hear, and should we move Madam Clerk straight to the amended motion?
So I have that the applicable staff be directed to write a report to investigate and mitigate the infrastructure concerns on East Mary Street.
Okay. Councillor Nyman, this is your idea. Are you fine with that?
I'm on the... 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 I'm on the...
All right, slight amendment is forthcoming.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The acting CAO just said to refer to staff for a report.
Leave it at that? All right, are we, is that acceptable to you? All right, so do you want to just give it to us one final time, Madam Clerk, and then we'll vote on it? Yes, okay. Councillor St. Jean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we attach a timeline to that? Because the deputant is asking for this to be remediated before winter, preferably October, so I'm just curious to know, through our acting CAO, what kind of a timeline we'd be looking at for this report.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't asked staff that question, so at this point, I can't confirm it'll be October, but I think a month and a bit is probably enough time.
Is that fine? Yeah? And Councillor Bullock, you have one follow-up to that?
Yeah, my concern here is this is one group that's coming to us about the effects of flooding. There are hundreds of properties in this county that have been affected by flooding this year, and were affected two years ago. And my concern is, if we're going to do a report on one section, how many other people are going to come back and say, "You've got to fix this and this"? We don't know the extent of the problem, so I don't know how we get that in this report. Perhaps the report should contain some reference to what the county's responsibility is for protecting private properties from floodplains, and how extensive that might be.
Robert?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I would concur. As I heard earlier, it would be nice to get the facts, and that would be the intent of the staff report, is to bring forward the facts. Staff certainly are aware of the situation, have been on-site, have been in conversations with Quinte Conservation and the Ministry of Environment on this issue, so we'll bring all of that back, and then council can be fully informed of what is going on.
Okay, fine with that. All right, so, Madam Clerk, we're going to ask for a report, and the timeframe is... Okay, whoops, we have one more question, comment from Councillor McNutt.
It is just one comment relating to Councillor Bullock's concern. This does relate specifically to some county infrastructure, so, or Quinte Conservation. I don't know who is responsible for which piece of infrastructure, but they are, they are, all the parties are aware. I believe there are plans underway to deal with the municipal or Quinte Conservation infrastructure regardless, so it doesn't necessarily relate to the floodplain issue itself, because there's not an opportunity here for floodplain mitigation just to look at the infrastructure, so that, I don't know if that's quite correct, it may be...
I think, I think that's the understanding, is that they're going to get to the root cause of the problem, and then it'll be, it will go from there. That's how I understand it. Is that how you see it, Mr. McCauley?
Yes, that's part of it, of course, and as was noted, we do have some plans to go in and remedy, but those are in discussion with the conservation authority at the moment, so...
Okay, so let's, let's move on. So, Madam Clerk, do you want to just reread for one final time with the, with the date in there for us?
That the concerns regarding East Mary Street be referred to staff for a report.
And report back within, are we reporting back, or we're not going to commit?
If you would like to put a timeline of October, that works. You guys okay with that?
Yes, we'd like to have a time.
It sounds like we need a, some reference to time here. Yes? Okay. What was the timeline?
I just put October 2019. Would you like the second meeting of the Committee of the Whole of October, or just, I think, yeah.
Okay, it sounds like October's good. All right, so, all those in favor of the amended motion, hands up. That carries. Thank you very much. Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're moving to 4.2, in a deputation by Ken Duer concerning the museum strategy. All right, so are we ready to go? Microphone on, and who's doing the deputation?
We are.
Both of you?
We are doing it in tandem.
All right, so you state your names, and remember, you have 10 minutes in total, and I'll give you the two-minute heads-up, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jennifer Lyons, head curator for the county museums, and I'm joined by Ken Duer, who is a member of our Prince Edward Museum Advisory Committee. We are here today to introduce you to our new museum strategy, which we have spent the better part of the last year working on. A small committee comprised of staff and volunteers worked with a company, Blue Dot Strategy, to bring forward our proposed plans for the next four years. You will see this in a staff report to follow in the agenda. However, I just wanted to make clear that there are financial figures attached for approximation within the museum strategy. I just want to underscore that these are approximations only. We are not asking this to be an approval of the finances implementation portion of the museum strategy. Through one of our many outreach opportunities in the community, we, the museums, came across a couple who have recently moved back to the county, Elizabeth Lancaster and Scott Campbell, and they formed the company, Blue Dot Strategy, which is a consulting firm mainly working with private businesses, but they develop strategy meant to be living documents to help organizations plan for the next several years. We facilitated team meetings that were held monthly from September 2018 until just this past May. As a result, we've come up with a precise aspirational statement that will be at the forefront of priorities the museums put in place, and five clear objectives and associated concepts to assist us in making this aspiration a reality.
Just a little bit of historical context. The county museums consist of five seasonal museums, each one highlighting a different chapter in the history of the county. Prior to amalgamation in 98, the museums are operated by individual towns and townships. After amalgamation, the five independent sites gradually evolved into a collective known as the county museums. The county museums are the guardians of 35 buildings, an estimated 50,000 artifacts, heritage gardens, parklands, and orchards, as well as 19th-century cemetery and outdoor exhibits as well. The museums are owned and operated by the corporation of the County of Prince Edward. The Prince Edward County Council is the governing authority, and the museum advisory committee provides advice to council, drawing on volunteer input and expertise to address issues and opportunities that support the system as a whole across the board.
We did retain some items from our last cycle of strategic planning, which was from 2015 to 2018, and that's primarily our institutional values, which are welcoming inaccessible spaces, participatory experiences, playful and profound, accurate interpretation, partnerships and collaboration, responsiveness to community interests, and responsible stewardship and management. Our mandate also went unchanged from the last cycle, feeling that it was still as relevant as ever. This is sideways, but it is in your agenda package to refer to further, just making note of the organizational structure of the county museums. We are a blend of different types of staffing, a combination of non-union, union, and student staff who are employed on a mixture of full-time, part-time, and seasonal basis.
Okay, a bit of background on the strategic outcomes, or strategy outcomes, rather. According to Jungers' Strategic Theory for the 21st Century, a strategy is not an operational plan, and that is the basis on which we, we started our discussions. Rather, a strategy is a high-level view that bridges the gap between today's reality and an ideal future. So a strategy also needs to assess, as this one does, the resources and risks required to bridge this particular gap. So our strategy for 2019, 22, 2022, is outlined in the document that's attached, but just as a, as a quick overview, it has an aspirational... it has an aspiration, it has five clear objectives and their rationale for each. It has overarching approaches to achieve the objectives, which are flexible concepts. They are not specific tactics to achieve. Then it also acknowledges potential risks and estimates timeline and resources required to implement the objectives.
Okay, so the aspirational statement that we settled on as a committee was to preserve and bring to life the unique cultural heritage of Prince Edward County. And this really touches on the two distinct facets of museum work. The first part, preservation, is really conducted mostly off-season. It's often behind-the-scenes work. And we can't do these sorts of things like site maintenance and collections management and research in isolation. It obviously has to be front of mind of what, who, who we're doing this work for. The second side of the coin is the public face or bring-to-life. This is mainly during the peak season, when we have all of our visitors coming to the county museums, May through the end of September. And at the same time, these sorts of things, like educational programming or special events, they need to be based on substance, the substance of our local heritage, our heritage collections, to back up those experiences for the public.
So we're going to move now then to the first objective, and I'll just speak very briefly and give you an overview. The first one is to implement a system that protects and preserves a museum's collection in accordance with industry standards. Currently, the museum's storage consists of several small makeshift areas, which are not suitable storage facilities for a museum collection. Artifacts that are donated to the museums are, in fact, face considerable risk. With new temperature and humidity-controlled storage, we have a better chance to protect the current holdings and ensure the artifacts entrusted to our care in the future are available for future generations to enjoy. Securing funding and locations for proper storage is a top objective, because these needs are fundamental to the museum system.
Okay, the second objective is about sourcing and securing additional funding for programming, exhibits, and technological support in particular. You'll see a few percentages there in terms of what is spent in the 2019 operating budget on the areas of exhibits, educational programming, and special events. The thought is that we will work to create a fund, whether through the county foundation or another like-minded organization, to invest in, in order to support these three areas of core museum functions. At the same time, we'll also be pursuing alternative grant opportunities, always keeping our radar on for funding for cultural initiatives.
Objective three relates to ensuring they were able to base an interpretive plan on relevant visitor data. Currently, the museums collect basic information, basic attendance data.
Just to let you know, you're at the two-minute mark.
Two minutes, so we've only spoken for two minutes. Currently, the basic, we collect basic visitor attendance. In 2019, there's a more in-depth visitor survey in place that will help us understand marketing spends and identify opportunities. But going forward, the focus will be to gather relevant visitor data, excuse me, to make evidence-based decisions for the system and identify new areas of exhibits and events.
Okay, objective four, increase museums' engagement with county residents. We started to initiate a summer survey this year. It was very clear that the vast majority of visitors coming through museum doors are actually visitors to the county and not community members. And so we're looking at how we can make more of a solid relationship with our immediate community, including activities like a membership program.
And finally, objective five is to implement a new volunteer framework that was approved by council in 2018. Subcommittee of the advisory committee put forward a new model. The idea, and it all arose out of the fact that we are having increasing difficulties recruiting new members and enticing existing members to serve in executive roles on the Friends Groups, the five Friends Groups at each museum site. So the reference, the terms of reference were altered, came to council last year. The movement going forward will be to try and establish a museum advisory committee primarily for strategy and an operations team, which will primarily look after the day-to-day operation of museums, thereby allowing both groups to do their work more efficiently and, and more, in a more focused fashion.
And essentially, we've put in a plan in place to both implement and evaluate our, our actions. The first step, which is the only one I'll mention here, is putting in place a work plan or an action plan multi-year that will help us identify specific tactics to make this a reality. Okay, that concludes our deputation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Questions from members of council of the deputants? Counselor Margitson?
Thank you. Of the 50,000 artifacts, I'm sure some of them are on display. Are they scattered throughout the five museums?
Through the chair, yes, they are. Many are on display. The 50,000 is an estimate. Because of our storage situation where the items are scattered in various locations, we are just initiating an inventory project at one of our sites this year. So it is a rough estimate at 50,000 artifacts.
Just to follow up then, you're looking to centralize your storage into a building.
That, that would most definitely be the preference.
At one of the sites?
We have not settled on a specific route to meet that objective. It could be purpose-built, it could be a rental facility, it could be a partnership with another organization. We are open to all possibilities at this point.
Would this be the most urgent objective of the five?
Yes, I would say so. We didn't really list the objectives in priority order, but that one is number one. And it was the first addressed and the most lengthy addressed amongst committee members.
Thank you.
Counselor Mainer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you for your deputation. Just for clarification, so when you talk about, so the funding for this strategy will by and large fall to outside, like outside of county budget dollars? Is that what, when you were talking about the community foundation?
Through the chair. The, the one objective which deals specifically with exhibits, educational programming, and technological support, those are the items that we're specifically looking to establish a fund to support. The remainder of funding to implement this plan would come forward through our annual budget process to council.
So just as I flip through these sides, so it's the 100,000 that would be the fund, like which, if you could just kind of summarize?
The 100,000 is just currently earmarked in our capital of a budget for 2021. So it will be appearing again before council.
Thanks, thank you.
Good, good. Any other comments or questions for the deputant on the horse shoe here? All right, seeing none, why don't we get a move in a second to put the deputation on the floor for a vote? We've got Counselor McNauten, seconded by Counselor Bailey. If you would read that, please, Counselor McNauten.
Thank you, yes. This is the McNauten-Bailey motion that we received the deputation by Ken Doer, Prince Edward Museum Advisory Committee, regarding the 2019 to 2022 museum strategy be received. Sorry, I mucked that up somehow.
We got the point.
We got the point, though, okay.
All right, any, any further comments, questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of receiving the deputation? That carries, thank you very much, and thanks for your time. Okay, so we're moving to section five, comments from the audience. Can I just have a show of hands in the audience? How many will have some comments for us today? I see one, two, four. And is there somebody besides you, Barry? Okay, and just can I get a sense of what are the agenda items that we're going to be talking about? Barry, I saw you first, so you're speaking...
Five.
6.5? Anybody else here to speak to the same idea? One, two, okay. And the other folks, which are you speaking to? Sorry? Okay, and just yourself, or is there someone else on 4.1? Okay, so we've got three of you? All right, well, since we've, that one's still fresh, why don't we, why don't we start with you folks? So if you want to come up to the podium, make sure the microphone is on. I'll get you to state your full name, if you would.
Sit down? Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay, just, and just to, so you have three minutes?
Yep.
And I'll give you the one-minute warning, just so you know. All right?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. So my name is Pascalene Phillips. I'm a naturopathic doctor, and I run, own the Picton Naturopathic Clinic at 17 East Mary. So I've been there for almost five years now. And 2017, the first year of the flooding, didn't really impact my property, or my business. It did impact the property, of course. It was flooded, it was swampy, we had an influx of mosquitoes. But that cleared, and then this year, I was very much impacted. This year, my basement flooded, early May. It was pretty bad. So I managed to get most of the water pumped out. It still isn't fully gone. It won't dry. So my major concern there, in terms of having a health clinic, is that I will get a mold infestation. Right now, I'm working really hard to prevent that. I've rented air movers, I've got fans going all the time just to keep the area as dry as possible. But it won't dry. So I just wanted to bring this up, because it's not just my property value that I'm concerned about, it's my business. I can't have people who aren't well coming into a house, a clinic that is moldy, because mold is, with the off-gassing that occurs from mold and the spores that are produced, it is one of the most toxic things that you can expose somebody to. I also do live there, so I'm also concerned about my own health in that circumstance. I think that is, that and the mosquitoes. I just wanted to clarify that. Mosquitoes don't just itch you, they're not just a nuisance that way. They're also vectors for Lyme bacteria and Lyme cofactors. So they have found Borrelia and Bartonella and other organisms in mosquitoes. They do transmit from person to person. So we're also, I jokingly call it my malaria swamp, but it does also have that potential. So those are my two impact statements, yeah.
Okay, thanks for your comments. I'll just check with my fellow members of council. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much. So I have the next person who's also here to speak to the same item on the agenda. You want to just make sure the microphone is still on and state your full name? And you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Carol Noel. I live at 8 East Mary Street, right across from Megan's house. And over the past, in 2017, everybody thought maybe that would be an anomaly, but clearly not. This Great Lakes situation is persisting due to policy in part of Ontario. And also, the, the infrastructure is the responsibility of the county, of this municipality. But I want to, I kind of want to emphasize, see, I guess you could say, the distress level of the people who are directly impacted. It's been, my neighbors are sad. They're, you know, there's a certain amount of, like, emotional misery going on with this. And it's, 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 you know, been difficult for everybody to put... We formed this block solidarity group, in part initially, to support the people who are directly impacted. I'm across the street, so I don't have flooding. But it's still, you know, some of that stuff impacts me, too. Lots more bugs, lots more, this smell. But more than that, the impact on my neighbors. And also, you know, like, it's, it's, it's all we talk about, almost. It's, it's been an overarching, very compelling issue, very difficult, you know, to bear, you know, for the people who are directly impacted. I just wanted to really stress that to council, that this is not just about land values. But that is very important, too, because that depresses everybody. That affects my land values, too. If their land values go way down, mine will be affected as well, even though I'm not directly flooded. I'm right there, right? So lots of levels, lots of aspects to distress. And that, I just wanted to, like, put that word there, big block letters, distress.
All right, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none, we get our third speaker on this item, please. Just making sure the microphone's on and state your name.
Hello?
And state your full name.
My name is Anita Davis.
And you've got three minutes, thank you.
6 East Mary Street. My husband and I have owned the property since August 2002. We are now members of the Primary Neighborhood Association, and I want to thank Megan for representing us and for her informative presentation. The residents of East Mary Street have improved their properties through renovations and landscaping. However, this year, it is hardly noticed by visitors, because they are busy gawking at the water park that has developed. Our property is on the north side, across the street from the flooded neighbors. But we have our frustrations because of the effects of this overflow from the creek. This is not a typical spring occurrence. It happened in 2017 and this year. As of today, it is not totally cleared up, and it is the end of August. What I have noticed with all the standing water in early spring, the mosquitoes and black flies were swarming in the yard, even during the warm sunny days. This is not typical. Usually, they are only a problem in the evening, and not usually so many. As the water remained and the materials rotted and the algae bloomed, there grew the overwhelming stench that Megan told you about. This often wafts into our patio and through the windows into our house. It is very unpleasant. Some of us go to the discounted Tuesday night movies at the Regent. We walk home, and as soon as we turn the corner from Bridge Street, the foul smell greets us, and we know we are home. When I have been visiting at the property beside the culvert and the levee, where it was lowered, as Megan talked about, as you are aware, I have witnessed the water overflow the creek bank and run into the two yards behind number one and number five. This is not too much groundwater. The backyards become a part of the creek. I also watched fish, usually carp, ducks, and other wildlife swimming from the creek into the yards. I am sure this water continues to flow, pass the check-off culvert, into the other yards, adding to the depth of the water. If the berm at the bank was repaired, extending the levee in this area, the water would stay in the creek and run into the marsh and wetlands in Delai Park. So I'm happy that you made the motion you did and that you are going to consider our concerns. But I think it was, it was important to hear how it's affecting everybody on the street. So thank you for listening and for your service to the people of Prince Edward County.
Thanks for coming, and your comments. Any questions for the speaker from the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And is that it for those of us who had something to say on 4.1? I get all three of you? I think I did. Okay, so, Mr. Davidson, you're next, sir, to speak to us about 6.5. You have three minutes, if you want to state your full name, and I'll give you the one minute.
Harry Davidson. I'm the Chair of the Ad Hoc Trail Improvement Committee. Mr. Chair, members of council, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. As Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee to upgrade the Millennium Trail, I'm pleased at the progress that the committee and its volunteers have made to the surface of the trail and, and the development of signage that has been installed. Of the 49 kilometers on the trail, all but five kilometers through the wetlands near Hillier were upgraded last fall and this spring. This last, this, this section will be done in October, when the nesting birds have flown south and we can do the work without disturbing them. We receive compliments all the time from everyone who is on the trail now. They're pleased with the improvement and the access that it gives them from Wellington to Picton, and at the western end, from Hillier to Carrington Place. to Picton, and at the western end, from Hillier to Carrington Place. My submission to you today is to request an amendment to Item 6.5 that the staff is going to recommend on the launch point development plan process. As I stated to them in the Ad Hoc Committee meeting last week, I feel that their approach is overly bureaucratic, too expensive, and it will take too long. The Ad Hoc Committee was established because I had the experience of upgrading the trail through Wellington, including the launch point there. And we could do it at a lower cost and within the budget that the county had established to upgrade the whole trail. Now, to the launch points, I have no quarrel with the steps to be taken and the consultation necessary with the county departments and the public. But let me do it. We do not need a formal process to design a launch point, determine the cost, and secure funding. We have that already with Wellington as an example. We're talking about a parking lot with a kiosk, a picnic table, and a porta potty. This is not rocket science. The kiosk design was approved by Ernie Margeson before he was elected as a councillor. And at the last Ad Hoc Committee meeting, I presented the draft proposal for the cost of these launch points, the way I would see it totaling $25,000. The PEC Trail Committee fundraising at the start of this project raised-
Barry, just sorry to interrupt. We're at 3:30. If you could maybe wrap it up for us. Thank you.
We raised $40,000 more than the $80,000 commitment, so we could easily cover the $25,000. So in conclusion, I'll follow the steps that are outlined in the proposal by staff, but let me do it with the Ad Hoc Committee without having to come back to you for further approval.
Thank you, Barry. Questions for Barry? Okay, Seenon, thanks, Barry. Could I have the next speaker, please, also on the same agenda item? State your name, sir, and make sure the microphone's on. You have three minutes.
Yes, I think we're, I think we're on here. Yes, my name is Patrick Maloney, and I'm Chair of the Prince Edward County Trails Committee and Vice Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee for the refurbishment of the Millennium Trail. To back up what Barry said, I'll just sort of follow a little bit what, what he was talking about, particularly the staging areas. I think when we did, I did a presentation to the last, or Committee the whole, and showed some design work for the, for the trail. We've spent a couple of months already doing, doing design work, premised on the basic fact that would have to be low maintenance, and understanding that the only secure piece on the property would be the, the kiosk. Everything else is really just, you were grading an area and putting things on top of. So we're not talking about concreting the whole area in. We're talking about a fundamental, simple way of starting what is not just a staging area, but it is the kickoff to the trail in Wellington. And I think the last, when I made the presentation last time, there was a whole big issue about, you know, losing parking for the LCBO, rather than the focus on this is an area that was designated for the use of the trail, and let's talk about how much parking do we need for the trail users, and not talking about how much is going to be lost to the LCBO parking lot. It's two different, those are two different discussions. We have a donor who has, as I said in the last meeting, that who has, will donate about $18,000. Add that to a $7,000 current budget we have for, for the, for each staging area, and we could easily cover that design. There's design work been done. We have volunteer design work done. We went out and had a quote done prior to the design work, and figured that by the time we were finished, we couldn't do any design work, because it would, we couldn't do any building because all the money would have gone into design work. And that backs up Barry's kind of theory that we're just not going to be able to build these things for a cost that we can currently build it today by ourselves. The other one I just want to make a quick mention on is the, what bothered me a little bit about how this presentation was done is that we have a report on the Ad Hoc Committee Terms of Reference. The Terms of Reference were asked to be changed back in December because of the debacle of the brushing, the mechanical brushing that went on, on the trail north of 33 and Picton, where work was done by the Ad Hoc Committee with the volunteers. And we brushed out about seven or eight K of the trail. And then afterwards, behind it, the, somebody in the county, and we never did find it to this date, took a mechanical brusher and then took about another, probably about seven or eight meters on either side, and clear cut all the way up about seven kilometers. We didn't find out this after the fact. We were never informed about it. And one of the reasons we'd asked for a change of Terms of Reference was to open the communications between staff and the council and the, and the committee. The other thing to rub salt into an open wound is that the people that did the work, nobody would admit who did it. I think those people are no longer staff here.
Just, just let you know, we're at three minutes.
And I'll make it real quick. And the other, the other issue is that, is that $10,000 was billed against the Ad Hoc Committee, the budget for the committee, without any, any, any conference with the committee. So that was a really kind of a salt in an open wound. So I, basically, for Barry, I said I think that it's a waste of money to go back to staff and on, and then put a whole rigorous process through for the staging areas, which I think could be done much more practically within, within a cost-effective budget. If you continue to trust us, it's all about trust. It's trust that volunteers in the county and staff can work together to provide better value for the county. And if you ever want the Ad Hoc Committee to be a future committee for other projects, that's a really important piece to it.
Okay.
And I can't, thank you.
All right, just hold for any questions from committee members? Okay, Seenon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I need a, a motion to receive the comments that we had. And Counselor Nyman's going to do that, and seconded by Counselor McNamara, if you would, sir.
But the comments received from the audiences, or the comments from the audience be received.
Thank you. All those in favor? That carries, thank you very much. Okay. Moving right along. We're at items for consideration. We're going to start with 6.1, and this is a community development report on the museum's strategy. And so let's put this on the floor. Could I have a mover and a second for this, please? Got Counselor Nyman, seconded by Counselor McNamara. All right, and do you want to read that for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Nyman McNamara motioned that the report of the Community Development Department dated August 29, 2019, regarding proposed museum strategy 2019, 2022 be received, and that council approves the museum strategy 2019, 2022 as attached.
Okay, very good. Yes, and so questions? Yes, we've got St. Jean, Counselor St. Jean, and Counselor Nyman. And I guess I gave him the, the start on this one, so we'll turn to Phil.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to approving the museum's strategy, there are, there are a number of financial implications, I'll say, in the strategy. Yes, there are. There's, so I, and I'm, I just like to ask a simple question. Should we not be approving it in principle, as opposed to outright approving the entire strategy? Just a question to staff, I guess, Mr. Chair.
Somebody on staff want to handle that question? Please.
Through the chair. As was stated in the financial implications piece, the, the financial, the financial figures that are included in this strategy are just general estimates and not intended to be any part of the implementation budget. Those, any funding that would be required to implement any of these strategies would have to come to council for approval individually, potentially through the budgeting process.
Did I cover it? Yeah, I think Counselor Nyman, you had a question on this?
I think it was just asked because I was worried about the budget dollars too. And I think it's clear that it's got to come back before any money is allotted anywhere, right?
Through the chair again. Absolutely, there wouldn't be any work done that would have a financial implication that wasn't budgeted for and approved by council. And those things would be individually brought to council for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for, yes, Counselor Maynard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Appreciate the report, and the strategic plan is always helpful. On the, I'm going to ask, see if you can, because in the deputation in the report talks about different types of funding from different sources, and I wasn't really able to, you know, some would be through county, maybe potentially through county foundation or fundraising, some through, so which projects, I was just trying to correlate and see which ones of those will, you know, have the potential of being, have budgetary implications, and which ones are anticipated to be, come from, funding from outside sources? So is it kind of the two? Okay, go ahead, if you can.
Through the chair to respond to Counselor Maynard's question, the, so if we talk about the various, so there's five objectives that have been identified. The first objective is around a system for the collection, to preserve the collection according to industry standards. That one would be, that's a capital project. I'm not sure if it has come to council before, but its intention, or has been on, the museums were planned for 2021, and would come to council for contemplation. And we would certainly be looking for both municipal funds and potentially donors. The second program, which was secure additional funding for programming exhibits and technology support, that's the one that contemplates county foundation or some other organization that could be the repository for donated funds to support that type of activity. The Objective 3 related to an interpretive plan and relevant visitor data is currently, similar funding is currently through the annual operating funds that are allocated. It's just a different way that we direct those funds. Objective 4, engagement with community residents. We would basically be leveraging existing advertising special events and exhibits, and just redirecting the marketing to greater engage community, residents of our community and not visitors from away. So the whole idea is to make the museums more relevant to the, to the members of our community. Doesn't require generally any additional funding, just a redirection of funding on the annual operating budget. And volunteer framework would probably involve some type of grant funding in order to make that a reality. Hopefully that clarifies your questions.
Anyone else have a question? It's just for myself, Todd. Just the 50,000 artifacts, I'm just curious about that and what we're required to do by provincial government. So 50,000, I mean, how do we decide? Are they all, do they all need to be preserved? Is there duplication within that? What do we do about duplication? Is there any sort of rulebook on that sort of thing? It seems like preservation is a huge part, and obviously there's a big cost associated with it. So I just wondered how the 50,000 artifacts gets justified.
So through the chair, I'm going to ask the museum curator, Jennifer Lyons, to answer that question, because that is beyond my scope.
Fair enough, sir. Thank you. Jennifer?
There is, through the chair, there's most definitely duplication in the system. Part of the issue is actually having adequate space to actually evaluate what is in storage in, within the five museums, because items are boxed away in totes in various small storage facilities, in barns, in sheds, in attics. And so being able to centralize the collection amongst all five sites gives us an opportunity to free up some space, hopefully, by identifying where duplication exists.
Very good, thank you. All right, anybody else have some questions? Counselor Bullock is feeling well enough to ask a question.
We'll see what we can get through. Okay, the strategy itself. Two things that this council has done recently that I don't see reflected in the strategy is, one, the push to find operational and strategic, pardon me, operational and structural efficiencies. I don't see that mentioned. Is that going to be considered going forward? That's the first part of the question. So please.
Through the chair. In the presentation, it was, it was brought forward that this, this strategy was, the work was completed in May 2019. Before that, directive was provided by council. So absolutely, the responsibility, would be the responsibility of the museums department to work within the constraints that have been placed by council to find efficiencies and structural opportunities.
And the follow-up, of course, is council declared a climate emergency. So there's no reference to the effects on, on climate change on that plan. So I would ask that that be considered as well.
Also came probably right around the time that the work was being done. And so we would certainly, any directives of council would, would absolutely be incorporated into the strategic planning for the, that division.
You find that, Counselor Bullock? All right, anyone else? Okay, Seenon, so we have the motion on the floor. It's been read. So at this point, we're just voting to, to approve the museums' strategy as attached. All those in favor? That carries, thank you. All right, so that's getting us to 6.2. We have Development Services Department to consider their report to do with the, the water tower repairs, upgrades for Bloomfield and Consecon. So I need a mover and a second to put that on the floor. Counselor Margitson's going to move it, seconded by Counselor McMahon, if you would, sir.
Yes, this is Margitson McMahon, motioned that the report of the Development Services Department dated August 29, 2019, regarding the tender award Bloomfield and Consecon Elevated Water Tower Upgrade Contract 2019 EDW-31 be received. That contract 2019 EDW-31 be awarded to Jacques Dailloux Coatings Management, Incorporated, in the amount of $559,200 and no cents, plus all applicable taxes. That an increase of $30,909.12 from the Water Capital Reserve Fund to Consecon Water Tower Capital Budget be approved, and that a bylaw, that the bylaw listed on this agenda to authorize the execution of an agreement between the County of Prince Edward and Jacques Dailloux Coatings Management, Incorporated, be brought forward to the September 10, 2019, meeting of council for enactment.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments from the committee? I've got Counselor Bailey, I see first. Yep, sir.
Robert, I think this one might be to you. On page 46, of the four items that are not being dealt with, repairs and improvements to the internal mixing system Bloomfield and Consecon, and replacement of the chlorine pumps, pipe work, and chlorine analyzer. I normally don't want to spend extra money, but is it better to do these now, rather than to hold off and do them later, because they are mechanical?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm going to ask the director to talk about the technical aspects of that. I'm generally of the mind that they're not in dire need and could be done at a later date. And I think that's the decision that was made in the report.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The four items you're talking about are the ones on page 46, about halfway down?
Correct.
Okay.
Especially the, sorry, the improvement of the mixing system and the chlorine pump and pipe work.
Right. So we did have some discussions with the director of Water Waste Water. And these were the items that he felt that he could either do on a, on a different type of contract, keeping this one more just to the towers themselves, or that he could live without of, without, for a short time. So, you know, taking the director of Water Waste Water at value, it was deemed that these weren't needed right, right now, or, or at least if he could get by without them in the short term.
You fine with that? Yeah, and Counselor Nyman, I think you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question, I guess, to Peter, maybe. It's in the report. It said we, we received the three bids. And then it was said in there that we started removing items. items to get the price down to below what was budgeted for. And I guess my question is, the item, they were all, everything was removed before the tender closed, so that everybody had the same opportunity? Is that correct?
I don't know that I know the answer to that. A bunch of the items were removed after the design, after the tender. It might have, like provisional items can be taken away. So the major item was provisional item, I think it was about $186,000 for the internal lining. So when an item is provisional, it's not guaranteed that it's gonna go anyways. So that can be removed. So what other items are you then referring to?
I just didn't, I can't find it in here. I just read it this morning, and I can't seem to find it. But I just, I wasn't sure if it said that, once we got the tenders, then we removed an item to get it below. And I guess, you know, I just wanna make sure everybody had the same opportunity, you know? But if it was a provisional item, that, you know, everybody understands that they can be removed.
Right.
So I just, you know, wanna make sure that that was the case.
Yeah, so I'm not, I would have to refer back to staff to find that answer for you, if you-
Mr. Chairman, if I can assist, perhaps on page 47 in the analysis section, the two amounts are identified. One is a provisional of $186,300, which is, everybody knows, may not go when they do the bidding. The only one I think that was given some discretion and may be questioned is the $46,800 to not replace a man gate or a person hatch into the tank. And given the scope of dollars involved, I don't think there's any offense in simply removing one item, component, from the rest of the tender.
So not sufficient to go back and redo the process?
I don't think the $46,000, the $600,000 scope was sufficient to re-tender the whole work.
Okay. Counsel Nyman, you okay with that?
I was just looking for page 47, because our pages aren't numbered.
Okay, Janice is- I'm wondering why you're looking for that, Brad. Maybe, you got it? We'll get another question, and then we'll come back to you. Okay, so let's go to Counsel Maynard's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to, to staff. The, the items that are being put off for a short time, I don't know, what kind of, what kind of a timeframe? And I'm gonna preface that by saying that the Consecon Water Tower in 2009, when we, when the county elected to exit the agreement with Quinty West, and even though this was a capital project, it was imminent then. So now we've got to a point where 10 years later, we have to completely redo the liner. And I'm assuming that the costs, if I remember at that time, it was maybe $120, $130,000, somewhere in that range. It's quite a while ago. So now we've, we've probably, you know, we've almost tripled that. So my question is, on these items that they've said are maybe of lower importance right now, how long are we gonna wait? And would it not be more prudent to do it while the work is being completed and not absorb all those additional costs, plus the risk that something might go wrong and you'll have an emergency repair?
Again, I'm not an expert on, the Water Waste Water Director is the one who operates these items, and these are the ones that he felt he could live without of in the short term. As to your question of when he was planning on doing them, I don't know that. So again, I could follow up with, with Mr. Kazza and get an answer for you.
I would appreciate an answer to that when it comes back to, to council, so that we can have that more fulsome discussion. And I think we need to kind of frame that in the fact that by waiting, we have, you know, waiting just on the, on the liner or on the interior painting, we have cost ourselves many thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and just how that falls in context with doing repairs at, at the correct time.
Okay, I think Mr. McCauley had something to say on that.
Mr. Chairman, just looking at page 46, the staff indicate that it'll be brought forward in budget 2021 if the monies can't be found at the end of this project.
Okay, so next we've got Counsel Margitson.
Thank you. I, a question, I think, to either Peter or Robert. The contingent, you've included our contingency. So if we don't use that, we'll be, we will be on budget. Okay, and that's our contingency. So that the contractor-
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have access to that. The only way they could get access through a change order process.
Right. If something comes up.
Right.
Now, then my question was, if we wanted to stay within approved budget, we, you say that we'd have to remove the miscellaneous metals, safety upgrades, which was $34,200.
Right.
My, it struck me that that might have been something that could have been locally done at a cheaper rate, but-
It's possible. A lot of times, these, these projects are lumped together-
Yeah, I understand.
Trying to get it done under, you know, with one, one stroke. It's possible that-
Hopefully, if they're under budget, yeah. But here, we're over budget, so.
And that's what I think Director Kazza was planning on doing with the outstanding items, was recognizing, okay, we're not gonna do it with a large capital project, and he'll do it through his smaller, minor capital projects, because he does a lot of these smaller projects on, with his own resources, so.
But they're still in there, the metals, right?
I'd have to-
Yeah, if you look at the last paragraph on page 48.
Okay.
Council could elect to reduce, remove the additional items-
Right.
-for the safety and metal upgrades.
Correct.
Well, I, that's my feeling, Peter, that we do have local people that do that work that might be cheaper than lumping it into the large firm, large contract. So I'd put that out there for your consideration.
Okay.
If we wanted to stay on budget.
Brad, you're back, back to you. You found what you needed?
Sure. And if Counsel Margitson wanted to put that motion forward, I would second that. I would. But I'd like to, I just wanna go back. I did find the $46,000. That wasn't a provisional item, but I understand what Robert said there. So if we look at the contract, though, everybody has different prices for provisional items and doing whatever, I guess by taking a provisional item out of the contract, does that change everybody's prices? And we may get a lower price from one of the other ones. That's what I'm looking at.
Correct. So through you, Mr. Chair. When the decision is made to remove a provisional item, it can give you a different, lower bid. And then that would be the low bid that you would go with, because the provisional item is a, is a, is optional, I guess. So in this case, they were still the lower bidder, whether or not that was in or not.
Good with that. Okay, I've got Counsel Prinzen is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna put it out there that I agree with, I agree with this report. We sit around this horseshoe, we set him a budget, now we're talking of all these upgrades. So we only gave him so much money. Water Waste Water made their calls as to what they think they don't need today. And we're starting to analyze every little thing that we don't need instead of what we are getting. So just remember, it was our budget that we gave them. They're trying to stay within our budget, so they have my support on this report.
All right, any further questions or comments? There was some talk of a amending motion. Is that something that we have a heart for, or are we good with it as it stands on the floor now?
I simply asked staff if there was an opportunity to stay within budget, although if we don't use our contingency, I believe we are within budget.
Correct.
And I guess I would have been encouraged by an opinion that, do we need, are we going to use that contingency, or do you feel we'll be below budget? It's probably difficult to assess. Maybe, Mr. McCauley can?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, just generally speaking, because we're now running into budget preps, instructions are that you take your worst-case scenarios and budget that to council. So contingencies are considered part of the budget until they are not spent at the end of the job, and then it is a savings on the job. The reverse is not a situation we prefer, is to have to come to council, say we're over budget because of the unexpected. So that's why this appears to be adding to your budget simply for a contingency, is because there is the chance it could be spent. It's a matter of how we choose to structure the budgets around our capital work, is in the conservative vein. Every possible contingency or, pardon the pun, every possible issue is thrown in the budget, and then we are covered if they actually materialize. But if they don't, we have a saving. And in this particular case, Water Waste Water is mostly, are all funded by debt, in any event, so we wouldn't borrow the money if we did not need to spend it, and we would have a cost saving in the end. So that's a long way of saying I would not remove the contingency and thereby not raise the budget, because then you'd have another report if something were to happen, saying I need money for the contingency.
Okay, thanks very much. So it seems to me we're gonna vote on the motion as it's written, so, and it's on the floor. So all those in favor of the motion? That carries, thank you. All righty, we are moving to 6.3, and Report of the Corporate Services Department Regarding Civil Marriage Ceremony Enhancements. Could have somebody to put that on the floor in a second. I've got Counsel Bailey to read, and Mayor Ferguson as a second on that. Counsel Bailey?
This is a Bailey Ferguson motion that the report of the Corporate Services Department dated August 29, 2019, regarding civil marriage ceremony enhancements be received, that the clerk, deputy clerk, and Kim White be permitted to conduct civil marriage solemnization services by appointment at Shire Hall-Picton and after regular working hours at the discretion of the clerk, and that the bylaw to authorize the appointment of the deputy clerk Laura McMahon and Kim White to perform civil marriages on behalf of the corporation of the County of Prince Edward be approved.
All right, thank you very much. Questions, comments? Counsel St. Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any excuse to bring former clerk Kim White back to these, this building would be-
Do you feel she's trustworthy?
Pardon me?
Is she trustworthy?
I believe she is. She has my 100% support. How's that?
All right, sounds good. I think Counsel Bullock, you had a, yes?
As someone who hasn't figured out how to retire yet, I'm shocked and appalled that Kim hasn't figured it out either. But anyways, all kidding aside, I do have a couple of questions for staff on-
Please do.
A, and I'm certainly fully in, in favor of this report and the plan, just from a, from a housekeeping viewpoint. What, is there an employment relationship that will be established between Ms. White and the county and this one?
Yes, and through you, Mr. Chair, yes. And it will be sort of like a consultant, is how we see it. Kim and I haven't talked, discussed the particulars yet of how much it will cost, and that's something that we will do after the bylaw is passed. However, it would be sort of like as an ad-needed consultant basis, where we pay her, give her a check at the end of the month, depending on how many ceremonies she performed on behalf of the corporation.
So it would be a self-employment thing. Does that affect liability? That's her, that's her first follow-up, and then I have a second follow-up.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, in my humble opinion, I wouldn't think it would affect the liability. There is nothing that is too strenuous of performing the job, and given that Kim White, my predecessor, did this for many, many years on behalf of the corporation, I think that, I don't see it as a liability for the municipality.
And my second follow-up is eminently great choice. What happens if other people come forward and say, hey, I can do that for you as well? And I just wanna know whether we've, whether there's any anticipation of needing anyone else, and whether there's any selection criteria in place?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I do not see this being opened up to anybody else at this time, depending on how the enhancements go and how many civil solemnization requests we get. We could see that perhaps something in the future of somebody already working for the municipality. I would certainly not open it up to anybody from the public.
Thank you.
Counsel Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had this discussion last term, something similar to this. So I'm just, and I'm a little confused right now. So this is, and it's nothing against anybody, but I just wanna make sure it's not the county that's offering this service, or it is?
It is the county providing that service, and I do see it as a core service of the clerk's office, because besides the justice of the peace, the only other option besides the clerk or somebody appointed by the clerk to provide this service, it would be a religious wedding ceremony. So I do see it as an essential service that is provided by the corporation.
Quick follow-up.
Follow-up.
So last time this came before us, we had a number of people come who provide this service in the county. And if I remember correctly, and Janice can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, and the mayor too, but that's their livelihood, I guess, when we are putting it. And now they're in competition with the county. That's kind of the argument that came. And so I'm just, you know, I'm a little concerned that we're, you know, trying to compete against local or private business, I guess, would be my concern. I think that was a concern the last time, too.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We will not be providing the service during the weekends, and that is when most of the efficiency in the area provide the service. So I wouldn't see it as direct competition necessarily. I see it as enhancing our revenues and our customer service to the people that come live, work, and play here. However, we don't wanna compete with the private business in this area. And I just, I see it as, I don't think, so far this year, we've performed 11 ceremonies. And we've had lots of requests from people that would like us to provide it on a Thursday, or a Wednesday, or a Monday. And I think we're open Monday to Friday, on 8:30 to 5:00 p.m., and we should be providing the service during those times.
We good? Okay, it's on the floor. Let's vote on the motion. All those in favor? That carries, thank you. Nice to see you, Kim. Learn to relax, okay? All right, so we're onto 6.4. So Corporate Services Department Regarding Revisions to Healthcare Advisory Committee's Terms of Reference. So I need a mover and a seconder for this one. I've got Counsel Bailey, seconded by Counsel Maynard, if you would, sir.
This is a Bailey Maynard motion that the report of the Corporate Services Department dated August 29, 2019, regarding revisions to Healthcare Advisory Committee's Terms of Reference be received, and that a bylaw be brought forward for enactment to approve the revised terms of reference of the Healthcare Services Advisory Committee.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Seen none. All those in favor? That carries, thank you. I guess it's to 6.5, Community Development Department Trails Improvement Ad Hoc Committee. I need somebody to move and put this one on the floor. Got Counsel Prinzen, seconded by Counsel Hirsch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a Prinzen-Hirsch motion that the report of the Community Development Department dated August 29, 2019, regarding Trail Improvements Ad Hoc Committee Terms of Reference update be received, and that proposed revised Trails Ad Hoc Committee Terms of Reference be approved, and that staff report back to council in the fourth quarter of 2019 with a launch point development plan that includes proposed launch points, locations, preliminary designs, public input, and costs.
public input, and costs, both capital and for ongoing operations, for approval.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Counselor Nyman first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess to staff, and if I understand what I read there, so there's, the launch points, nothing can be done until something is brought back to council for the approval. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's the intention, is that we would understand what the operational impact of development of these launch points are, where they're located, and hold public consultation as was requested in the last, after the deputation of Mr. Maloney at the last committee, or two committees, the whole ago. We would provide that information back to council so that they had the decision as to how they wanted to see or facilitate the development of the, you know, A, approve the launch points as appropriate places, or the locations as appropriate, the costs, or what the development would look like, and have a full understanding of what the capital costs would be, and then the ongoing operational costs to our operational departments.
Quick follow-up?
Thanks. Yeah, and I'd like to just say, you know, they're doing a good job with the trail and everything, and, you know, the one point I wanna make is, especially the one in Picton, is basically countywide, we are crying for parking, and, you know, we just, we have an area where it's not just overflow parking for LCBO. I mean, you go there any time of the day, and there's numerous cars parked in there, whether they're using the trail or walking downtown or whatever. And to lose that much parking, where are we gonna put those cars to park? Because we don't have any more parking. So we just need to keep that in mind, that parking is a premium, and we need to keep what we have.
Thank you. I think I've got Counselor Margatson is next.
Yeah, my question was through you, the chair, to Todd, and it's related to Barry's deputation. Is there an avenue for this process, the launch point development plan process, to be organized in such a way that staff can utilize the volunteers and the experience they have through the first launch point to your advantage to minimize costs and make this as efficient as possible?
Through the chair, absolutely. I mean, the anticipation would be that input would come from Barry and the Ad Hoc Committee, based on their experiences at the Wellington site. However, I think ultimately, the proposal should include robust public input and an opportunity for council to determine what the appropriate locations are and how much money they wanna spend, both in the capital side and in the operational side, certainly acknowledging some of the resolutions that you've made in the past around finding efficiencies and keeping costs contained. I think it's, staff takes that responsibility very seriously, and it's our responsibility to all of the repairs of Prince Edward County. You know, the work of the Ad Hoc Committee has been incredible in terms of the work that they've done on the trail. However, much this is, we're not asking for something that's any different than was done with the trail rehabilitation project in the first place. Staff led that. They also led the wayfinding signage programming in the same. We've proposed exactly what we did around signage to do with relationship to launch points. The Ad Hoc Committee was established when we couldn't find a corporation or company in the private sector to do the upgrade work, and so we empowered a group of volunteers to do that work through this terms of reference. And so we're not asking for something that's in particular different than what has been done in the other two phases of the project, and certainly would welcome the input of that group.
Counselor Hirsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question, I guess, for staff. Beyond the launch point development plan process, which is clearly not necessarily in full agreement, has the Ad Hoc Committee been consulted in this redrafting of the terms of reference? Like, were they in agreement?
Through the chair, the way that I understand it is that absolutely the Ad Hoc Committee brought forward the need to change the terms of reference, and they were consulted in that process. We input the launch point piece and had a robust discussion at their meeting last Tuesday. Certainly, there's not necessarily agreement on how that should proceed. However, I believe the other portions of the terms of reference have certainly been consulted with the group. Also, just in addition, I would assume that if they were unhappy with the other elements of the terms of reference other than the launch points, they would have addressed that in their comments.
Counselor Maynard is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, oh, I guess, a comment. So this Ad Hoc Committee was set up, so what we're doing now is we're adding things to that Ad Hoc Committee, because originally set up to include cutting back the brush grading and compacting the existing trail surface with the center crown, and a great job has been done on that. But at what point does, because Ad Hoc means that once they finish that project, that the Ad Hoc Committee then will be disbanded. So this is kind of like an ongoing creep. And when it comes to, you know, the signage, I think is, by and large, you know, a good part of that maybe is done or is on the way to being completed. But staging areas, I see, is entirely different, different kettle of fish, and I, my preference would be that we not, that we not adjust the terms of reference to allow continual, I mean, the, their work has been done and done well, which was brush and grading and compacting of existing trail surface. And if I had a seconder, and I may or may not, but I would say that we remove also signage and staging areas as required, and that would be under the scope of activities, because I think we're going down a trail that is going to be fraught with problems.
Okay. Thank you. We'll come back to that in a minute. So Mayor Ferguson is next on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of my points have already been addressed. I'd like to acknowledge you gentlemen for the exemplary work you've done to get this, get the trail back up, and a focal point of recreation. You see more and more people on it all the time. So the work is very much appreciated. This'll be, I guess, to Todd. At the last committee, or the previous committee, the whole meeting, there was a plan put forward for the Picton Launch Point-Nymon concurrence with Counselor Nyman, in that we have a, you know, critical parking problems, particularly down at Lake Street, which is, we are going to have to look at very seriously as to the, what we want to do with that bit of municipal property, and it will require public input. Do you have any idea what form that might take in terms of engagement with the public, and whether it might involve, I mean, there are two businesses there, one being the LCBO, the other being the agrarian market, so do you have any idea about that process?
So we've started some preliminary discussions, although we certainly haven't done a lot of work around how we're gonna do this process, or roll out the public consultation in particular, because we're waiting for council to decide whether it's our responsibility or at the hands of, or being provided to volunteers, or maybe not handle at all. However, the public consultation would involve public meetings. And also, one of the things that we ask in the motion is that we bring back to you a series of locations, and while it's relatively, or generally acknowledged that that is a potential launch point, it's not the only potential launch point we have in Picton, and it may be deemed by talking to the engineering department and some public consultation that it may not be an appropriate place to establish a launch point because of the congestion of traffic there. We don't know generally what that's gonna look like, but we're gonna come back with, our intention would be to come back with a series of areas or locations where we can have staging areas that are most appropriate to the needs of the community and to the needs of the municipality, and acknowledge the issues with relationships with traffic, et cetera.
Follow-up, sure.
So there are other options that will be, this is the important point, because park, we here hear about parking all the time, not just Picton, but everywhere. So minimizing the impact of inconveniences is crucially important. So as long as those options are brought forward, I think that would be terrific for public input.
Mr. McCollough, you wanted to say something on this point?
Yes, your worship, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take worship.
Having authored the original report that created the committee and the intent, this is a committee to deliver works in the field. And what I see here is that they are asking for permission to deliver additional new work in the field, and so what the terms of reference are doing is recognizing that those additional works are going to go to an outside consultation process, come through council, be approved, and then, should that all be agreed, where and when and how much, this committee would then again be tasked with delivering the work. The alternative is the municipality tries to do this independently, we run into the same problem we had before, in that we can't find a contractor to reasonably provide the launch points. So this would be analogous to a change order in the middle of a construction project, where you're asking the contractor to do more work, and so that's what the terms of reference are doing, but we need to give them a scope of what we want done, and that's the consultative part. And I take that the deputants didn't want to have a bureaucratic process, but it is council ultimately that decides the work it wants done. So aside from a deviation while we make our choice, they will then deliver that choice as part of their scope of work.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor McNaw, you had, have a floor? If you still wish to have the floor?
I don't even know at this point now. I think a couple of things have been mentioned. I am somewhat concerned that we're looking at a more bogged-down process than needs be, and I wonder if there are opportunities to streamline it a little bit and place a little bit more faith in the group that's been working quite diligently and successfully, and have proven that they can make, cover a lot of ground with relatively, with a relatively small budget. And I would love to be able to see what they could do, given a requirement for public consultation, to give them a little bit more latitude to see what they come back with. And I don't know if there's, there's no option here to do that, and I just don't know if there is some sort of, some sort of way that we could do that, that we could accommodate that.
Did you have an amendment?
And that would be, no, I'm just asking.
The motion, just asking.
Actually, I think I'm asking Todd. Hi, Todd.
So the question is, your question, Counselor McNaw, is, can it be simplified? And where within the terms of reference?
Yes. How, how can we streamline this? Yes, like Counselor Margatson said, how, is there a streamlined process that could go quite a bit faster, but still give the public the consultation that they require?
I mean, you can ask the Ad Hoc Committee to, you can remove staff's responsibility with relationship to the development, to creating a development plan for the launch points, and ask the Ad Hoc Committee to carry out the tasks, as was requested by Mr. Davidson in his comments to the audience today. You know, it's, that's, you know, certainly you can amend our recommendation. We recommend that, considering that it's public lands that these are gonna be put on, that there are some questions around what's an appropriate place, what kind of, you know, you, you know, Mr. Davidson asked specifically that you give him that authority and that he not have to report back to council, but that he carries out the public consultation. You know, it's completely up to you as to how you wanna make this move forward. My recommendation to you is that it's entrusted in the hands of staff, who handle public consultation on a frequent basis and are responsible to all the repairs of the county.
Okay, Robert, I think you wanna weigh in on this?
Just procedurally, Mr. Chairman, we've counseled staff before to not make decisions on the fly and try to redraft motions. If the sense of council is that they'd like to have the process reexamine to try and streamline it and give the committee members more latitude to do consultation and that kind of work, my suggestion would be refer the report back to the committee with that kind of direction, and then they could reconvene and examine what and how they might do this differently, given what was raised by the two deputants, and come back to you with a better scripted or different scripted terms of reference.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna get to that in just a second, but Counselor Nyman has the last word, and then we're gonna decide what we're doing here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I've heard what people are saying, but I guess the last point I wanna make is, when I was out campaigning, what I heard was, council's gotta have more input, more say. And what's, we're being asked here by a group of people is, you don't need no say, we'll look after it all. Well, I've heard, when I was out campaigning, why are we there then? So I think council's gotta have some say in things in order to make decisions, and Todd said it right. It's public lands, it's not just a certain group of people that's gonna use these lands, it's the county as a whole that's using the land, for whatever reason. And I think we have to bear that in mind, and the way it reads, it is here, I fully support it going forward, the way it's written.
Thank you. So we're gonna go back to Counselor Maynard, who is contemplating an amending motion. Where are you at on this point now?
Oh, we're through.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the motion on the floor. I guess, yes, we're good with that? Okay. So I'm gonna ask us to vote on the motion as it exists. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Vote of 10, so that carries. All right. We have no closed session. So we're to adjournment. Could I have a mover and a seconder for 8.1, please? I've got, he was very quick with his hand, Counselor St. Jean, and a seconder would be Counselor McNaw, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It brings me great pleasure to put forward a St. Jean-McNaw motion to this meeting now adjourned at 2:49 p.m.
All right, all those in favor? That carries. Thank you all very much.
Okay, now, how do, how do I put this thing to sleep?